It is Monday, November 16th, 2020. It's the Town of Rutland Select Board Meeting. It is 6:00 PM on the dot and we'll go ahead and get started. Open the meeting. I will at this point entertain a motion to waive the announcement of open meeting recordings if the board wanted as it would like to entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Stillings?
Stillings, aye.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Clark?
Aye.
And Resity, aye, motion carries, minimums. Before we get into minutes, treasury warrant payroll, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to take an item out of order. We have a presentation tonight that has been requested on behalf of RDIC as well as Harbor Homes Company that was awarded the RFP through the Heights process. Do we have any objections from the board of taking that out of order?
No, no problem. South Quintero.
Mr. Sullivan, if you and yours are ready to go, I'm more than happy to yield the floor for your presentation. If you need a few minutes, we can go back and do our minutes payroll treasury warrant and we're good.
I, I think we're good. Laurel, are you with us?
She's there.
She's there. Okay. And do we also, do we also have Ron Koivu?
Yes, you do.
Okay, great. So I guess we're ready to go Mitch.
Okay, well then I will yield the floor to you and to the company that you're working.
Okay. Really, the purpose of this is as the board knows, the RDIC voted unanimously to accept the proposal submitted by Harbor Classic Homes to develop the Rutland Heights property better known as the HPDD Site Heights Plan Development District. So we have received a concept plan that, you know, we evaluated and we thought it might be a good idea to just have this kind of as a meet and greet so that you can see the people. They've got a fairly short PowerPoint presentation they'd like to share with you and then open it up to any questions that you may have after. So if that's okay with you, thank you first of all for taking us out of order, appreciate that. I guess I'd like to interview, introduce Ron Koivu, the president of Classic Harbor Homes. Ron, take it away.
Great, thank you. And thank you, Mike, for introducing us. Thank you to Selectmen for listening to our discussions tonight. What I wanted to do first before we got into the project is I wanted to give you a little bit of background of Harbor Classic Homes and our team, if that's okay with you people. A little bit about myself and the individuals that are on the team. Just to let people know, my, my background started, I built my first home when I was 21 years of age. My, you know, I grew up on my grandfather's fireman Townsend and I helped him always doing the puttering around and working and I really enjoyed it.
So that was five or six years ago, Ron?
I'm sorry.
That was five or six years ago?
Oh, yes, yes. That, you know, and I, you know, and then I, I'm gonna go to the next picture, I guess here. What I did was, that's my grandson on the, what they call the doodle bug. Some of you people may know what they are, it's a homemade tractor. My grandfather built it back in the 40s. I actually used that when I was building my home in Pepel and that was a long time ago. Helped me pull out the stumps and stuff. I just thought it was a nice picture having my grandson on there.
Agreed.
And I'll tell you, obviously I still have that, doesn't run anymore, but I still have that tractor there. So five generations have sat in that seat. Then I wanted to, you know, talk to you a bit about myself. Is some people find it, find it very odd that I care about preserving old things. You know, I'm all, where I'm a builder, developer, and I care about preserving the old and the new. I kind of mix them together. And that's why we believe that Mike Sullivan and the RDIC Committee really put their confidence in our company. And we really thank you for that, for allowing our team and to turn your 86 Maple Ave into a beautiful act of 55 and over community. So before I get into or allow the next group to discuss the project and timelines, I'd want to really introduce you to our team and there are the members up there. Yes, I'm the president of Harbor Classic Homes. But our, my company's partner, Jim Adams, the runner of the bow tie, he's my mentor and has been the chief executive, is Jim Adams. He lives in Florida. Got his start here in Massachusetts, but he lives full-time in Florida. He's still developing properties down there in Florida. He's, he has done quite a few projects. He's done a community down there that you'll see a little later in a slideshow of over 400 homes in a 55 and over community. He's built, he's built other senior projects and actually has built some homes for some celebrities around. The, I started working for Jim soon out of high school. And you know, that first day, I still remember that job he gave me. I had to go fill the footings in a cellar hole with, with some fill. He says, I'll push some fill up here for you. So he gave me a shovel and he pushed it, oh, it was the bonyest gravel I've ever seen in my life. Now, I didn't have a wheelbarrow or anything. So I just shrugged my shoulders and said, okay. Well, I've been with him ever since and that was over 40 years ago. And for the last 30 years, we've been business partners. The next person, not the one in the middle, that's myself obviously. The next one is Laurel. She joined her company back in January this year. She was a professor of business communication in Virginia. And with her education and knowledge and with her desire to work with her dad, she is pushing us to grow. And this girl's come a long way from 11-year-old girl I first met when I started working for Jim. Mike Antonellis, I'm sorry, his name, is our planning and use land consultant. He worked, we worked with him on the other side of the table in Lancaster only a year ago. We brought a 23-lot subdivision through Lancaster with a commercial building and he helped us navigate through their whole system. And then we asked him and we hired him on a part-time basis to help us navigate all the other communities that we're going to be building in, especially around there. The next person, that's the blue dot, couldn't get Peter's picture, I'm sorry. But Peter Capabassa was our attorney. And his experience with real estate development is extensive. He brings a level head and thoroughness to the table and he keeps everyone aware of what's at stake and on target. Peter's becoming more and more instrumental to our success. The next person is Ken Oldfield. He is our engineer. If you, if you've been trying to build any projects, homes or anything right now in this economy, good luck trying to find an engineer to get it done fairly soon. Kent works very closely with us and we've become his number one client, which makes us this close to having an in-house engineer at all times. He actually has a desk here in my office and he's in my office at least four days a week. And I've known Kent for over 30 years when he first started in engineering. Glenn Lemieux, the next person at the bottom. He is one of our supers and he will be managing the build-out down there in Rutland. He has a talent for managing the subs, subcontractors with a balance of quick wit and he draws lines in the sand for them. His experience with commercial building drives him to be highly effective. And another thing is I coached Glenn in high school football back in the 70s. Another one I've known for a very long time. The next one over is Mike Koivu. Yeah, that's my son. He is one of our supers and he has grown up around the building industry all his life. He's been building for us on a full-time basis for four years now. And I feel that his patience dealing with the home buyers from, comes from with his love of hunting and spending hours deep in the woods. We have other team members as well. For example, our accountant Laura, she's in Florida in Jim's office. She's been with the Florida office for 20 years now. And she makes sure that we pay all our subs on time and our accounting is accurate. Our media team is spearheaded by Carrie and she also is in Florida and she helps set up all the websites and the communities for our developing, for the developments in order of market. Our in-house architect Heather, she helps us refine the building plans both here and in Florida to accommodate the buyers. We work closely with our road contractors. We use MP Crowley Inc. here in town and Powell Sand and Gravel over in Lunenburg for our road constructions. And our general site work is done by, by inside excavation and Koivu Earthworks. Yes, another Koivu, it's my other son. So it's another family member. So you see, we keep a very tight group here and we all depend on each other very, very much. So now that you know a little bit about us, I'm going to hand this over to Laurel who will give you a little bit of background on the project. I want to thank you so much for choosing us for building this project.
And thank you for, for letting us meet you, you know, in this context from afar. We really felt that it was important that everybody know who we are and, and have confidence in us. And so I'm going to describe a little bit about the project and what it's going to contribute to, to, to the community. But before I do that, I wanted to just take a minute to congratulate the town on this accomplishment. We especially want to recognize the RDIC under the leadership of Mike Sullivan. That group brought this kind of languishing site back to life. And this particular project that they've chosen is going to do a lot for the community. It's going to add to the charm and character of the community. It's going to spur economic vitality. It'll provide a tax revenue stream and it's a project that aligns with the master use, reuse plan. And if you could go to the next slide. So we, we actually think that, you know, the RDIC and the town have hit it out of the park with this particular project and also of course with their confidence in us and the choice of Harbor Classic Homes. You probably know 86 Maple Ave's long history better than I do. Back in 1865, that beautiful crest up there was where people went to convalesce when they had TV. As soon as you hit the top of that crest, you know it's a lovely place to be. We're really excited about seeing it transform. We think the next chapter in this parcel's history is going to be amazing. You're probably familiar with the solar project on the southern edge of the property. Our project is designed to be 22 acres on a portion of Zone A, which is on the crest and also Zone C, which is at the corner of Maple Ave. We can see the next slide. So specifically, as Mike mentioned, it's an over 55 community and it'll have approximately 44 duplex homes, which is about 88 units. Again, we have lots of experience with over 55 communities. If you could go to the next slide, we'll see just that, a couple of shots of Harmony Reserve, which is a 400-unit senior living community in Florida. And as Ron mentioned, you know, we've got extensive experience there. The homes that'll be up on the crest are going to be about 1,500 square feet, two-bedroom homes with two-car garages with an aesthetic that aligns with kind of Rutland and New England charm. You can see a couple of styles that we are contemplating. And what we're going to do is consult with the director of the senior center really for input on what kinds of floor plans, what kinds of amenities and features would Rutland's over 55 community be looking for. We expect to have a couple of alternatives to choose from. One-story homes will be common, of course, that's going to be high in demand. But we'll also probably have something like a story and a half version with a loft bedroom. So if a resident wants to have guests, for example. And next slide, please. So we're striving to build a community that, that appeals to people who want to downsize, who want to leave behind traditional maintenance and yard care responsibilities, but still want to be independent. They want to have access to the community that they have grown up in, that they know and love. And, and they want to stay there as they're aging. So we're excited about offering those alternatives. And next slide, please. Okay, so I was up on the crest just a couple, about a week ago and I saw people out there walking and, and it was beautiful how they were enjoying it. The community that we anticipate building there is going to have plenty of walkways and enough charm that it's going to continue to be inviting. In fact, the first time that we went up there, Ron and myself, he took a look at that flagpole and said, we're keeping that, we're keeping that. And, and it was his gut instinct to do it. And in a way, it's the homage to the history of the parcel and a homage to Rutland's ties to its community and country. So we're excited to see it emerge. And then once this pandemic is done, we envision residents from, from, you know, some drawn from surrounding towns in the Worcester area, they're going to entertain their friends and family here. And when they do, these people are going to go out and buy groceries. They'll get gas, they'll have cleaning services, order flowers, buy furniture, activities that are going to contribute to the local economy and enhance the sense of community. These are going to be impacts above and beyond the 1.3 million that the town will receive on closing and above and beyond the $500,000 that they're going to get from permits and fees for the build-out. So we're really excited about this because we think that this is going to enable you to accomplish the goals that you've been dreaming about and talking about for a really long time. So then the next question, of course, is, well, how do we get there? How do we get it done? So at this point, I'm going to turn the discussion over to Mike Antonellis. He's our community, community planning expert and he's been working with David George, who's your community planning expert on answering that.
Hi, everybody. Mike Antonellis here. Thanks again for taking the time to speak with us tonight. If you could forward to the next slide, please.
One more, sorry.
Okay, so timeline, so, so everybody's aware, this is a overview of the local process. So Rutland's regulatory process, so where do we begin and where we end here? The three main steps, as you see outlined here, is the pre-application conference, the concept plan and site plan review. Starting with the pre-application conference, Harbor Classic Homes is likely already met the requirements of this particular section, but I'll defer to the RDIC chair and Dave George, your town planner, whether or not they agree. If not, we're more than happy to immediately schedule a time to sit down with the RDIC to kick it off. So there we are with that. And, and that, that particular step in the, in Rutland's bylaw, it says that's to receive guidance before entering into binding commitments, preparation of plans, surveys, engineering and other development preparations. So obviously Harbor Classic Homes has been working very closely with acting town manager and your new town manager, Ron, as well as the town planner and your, your legal counsel to, to discuss all of those things. So that brings us to the next step in the process, which is the concept plan. Now, you, you basically saw the concept plan as, as Laurel was taking you through what Harbor Classic Homes proposes to do. Now that, Harbor Classic Homes can be ready to meet with, that is a public hearing, formal public hearing with the HPDD. So advertisements will be required as for standard public notices with a public hearing. So about two weeks out is when you need to advertise for that. With, within, or just shortly after those two, two weeks, I'm sure, depending on the schedule of HPDD's meeting schedule, Harbor Classic Homes can schedule a time to begin that process. And I'd say that's typically, that, that, reading the bylaw, that step in the process appears to be similar to that of the preliminary subdivision that your planning board is familiar with. So I guess that that, the typical duration for that is one to two meetings. I've seen typically one meeting suffices for that. And then assuming that's, that goes smoothly, it brings us to the site plan review. And that is also through the HPDD and is also a public hearing. Obviously requires the standard public hearing notices and all that 14 days in advance. The, the site plan, speaking with our engineer, Ken Oldfield, he believes that after approval of the concept plan, it'll be about three to four months to submit for that, to come before the HPDD as he'll need to do extensive site work and all that. Everything that goes into developing and then a good, a well-designed engineered plan to present to the HPDD. That review includes type of use, these are, these are, excuse me, the approval criteria for that within your bylaw states things like appropriate vehicle circulation, adequate parking facilities and functions compatible with historic or natural characteristics, impact to natural environment, active and passive recreation, as well as resource protection. So that's, that's what we'll go over during that stage, stage of the game. I imagine, based on my experience, once we begin the process with the site plan, about 60 to 90 days is standard, I would say, in reviewing a site plan. Again, I have familiarity with, with Rutland's local planning board and I know it'd be HPDD that is the ones who would be reviewing the site plan. But that's typical, I'd say, of, of site plan review is to take approximately that long. Obviously Harbor Classic Homes would aim for as little meetings as possible to bring forth the best possible plan upfront in order to minimize the amount of meetings and then obviously the amount of days spent in review. And we'll work closely with Dave George, your town planner, as well as your, your peer review engineer to get those plans ready for HPDD approval. And so, and that, that, that's really how we start and how we finish. And yeah, any questions on that? I'll, I'll take it back over to Laurel, thank you very much.
Yeah, so just in conclusion, you know, we're, we're really excited about this. We think it's a project that is going to, you know, create additional housing alternatives for residents, a windfall on closing so the town can complete its own goals, permitting fees of half a million dollars, a continuous tax revenue stream of, of about $350,000 a year, which over 10 years is three and a half million dollars. And, and it all aligns with the master reuse plan. So, so to all of us, this isn't just another house going up in town. We feel as if we're participating in developing a community within the community. And, and it's a victory for Rutland. And we hope that our presentation has helped you see why Mike and the RDIC are, have gone with us and that you have as much confidence, confidence in us as they do. And so at this point, I'd like to open it up for questions if anybody has any.
Well, first, thank you all for coming in to present. Pretty impressive. You know, RDIC has been keeping us moderately apprised of the process. So I think there's been a lot of excitement around town about the parcel. I also think too, you're a miss if I didn't mention, I know you've done your homework, but you know, the Department of Public Health every few years requires community health assessments from their different funded agencies. In North Central Massachusetts, one of the key findings is there is a need for 55-plus housing. Aging in place, particularly in rural communities, is a huge issue. So, you know, I'm particularly personally very excited about this project and really kind of believe in what you're doing. Does anybody on the, the board have any questions or comments for any of the members of Harbor Classic Homes? I think Mike had texted me, his power went out, so he lost his connection. So obviously, you know, if we want to talk about him, now's the time. But otherwise, if anybody on the board has any questions, I'm more than happy to open it up for those. All right, seeing none, again, thank you so much for coming in. Mike, did you work for the city of Worcester?
I did, yeah, I was senior planner for the city of Worcester.
We'll have to connect on that, I worked there for a long time.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, I did.
That's been great.
Yeah, it was, it was a fun experience. I'm sorry?
Let me say, before you let them go, just give me a second.
So I think also, what, what I think the board should do and what I would like to make a motion on, because there is excitement surrounding the project, is a motion of support for this group in their endeavor with the process, as well as for RDIC and moving this process along. So I think my motion will be to, I guess, to, to conceptually approve of what's been presented to us and support in any way that we can, this process moving forward. Do I have a second on my motion?
Second.
Whitman will second.
All right, everyone's on mute, so we're figuring the Zoom thing out. All right, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Ron.
Happy to let board members go first, but I'd like to make a comment.
Ron, we're open for discussion after the motion and second, so go right ahead.
Perfect, thank you. First, I want to compliment the RDIC for the work they've been doing and Mike has provided me with every report, every document that he has. So I have all that on my personal computer now, give all that information. RDIC had a lot to consider in this process and quite frankly, I think at the end of the day, made a fine selection. I wanted to talk briefly about the benefits of this project to the citizens of Rutland because I think it's important. There's communities all throughout the state that are looking for just these kind of projects for their communities. One is obviously the sale of a property, which is approximately $1,320,000. Laura also talked about, about $500,000 in building fees plus the annual revenues to the town for the property taxes of about $350,000. All those are great things. But one of the things I want to stress here is this is a tremendous benefit for seniors. Providing housing like this for seniors is phenomenal. Many seniors live in, I'm sure there's quite a few live in larger houses here in town than they really need as they get older, family members leave and they, they want a beautiful home that is more structured to seniors to live in so they can stay in Rutland. I think that's really crucial, understand that this is going to benefit many seniors in town who just want to downsize to some degree. Also, a huge benefit of these type of particular programs or projects are the fact that they don't provide a lot of, they don't burden the town services. Obviously, we're, you know, while we love families with children, they do have a significant expense to the community in terms of educating their children. This doesn't have that kind of expense to the town. So while it brings in a lot of revenue, it doesn't generate a lot of expenses on, on its side. I think, and I'm very appreciative of their comments about keeping the property even after the development in such a way as if people could walk through it and keeping a little bit of the history of the site. So I, I, we appreciate the comments by the people from Harbor Homes in looking at this as a long-term partnership with the town in a lot of ways. And I know they already talked about meeting with the senior director and getting their input on things and looking at how they could tie in this program to our community center to make sure that, you know, seniors have a place that they can enjoy. So I would say that many, many towns would be excited to get this kind of project and I think the citizens of town should really support this because it's going to be overall very, very good for our community. So again, thank you, everybody, for the work. I want to thank the board of Selectmen for holding this meeting tonight to, to hear the views and the work that the, the board has done to get it to this point. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, that's very well put, Ron. I think we're all excited about the project. RDIC has kept us in the loop and it's, it's really something that's been building and I think you're going to find a warm welcome here in Rutland. So we have a motion and a second on the table. If there's no further discussion from the board, I'll have a roll call vote. Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Stillings?
Stillings, aye.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Nichols, aye.
Clark? Clark, you're on mute.
On the left-hand side of your screen, Skip.
Yep, you gotta click on the microphone. Skip, can you give me a thumbs up for aye and a thumbs down for nay? All right, we have, uh, Clark, aye, and Residi, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you so much again for coming in. If there's anything you need during the process, you know, our staff is obviously working with you. Um, but please feel free to stay in communication with the Board of Selectmen and, uh, we look forward to supporting you. Move, move ahead.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so, that being said, uh, we'll give everyone the opportunity to kind of clear out. Don't want to sit through the rest of our tedious meeting. Um, we can go into... I'm sorry, uh, all right, let me just pull up the agenda. Okay, Skip, did you figure out the mute? On the bottom left-hand of the Zoom screen, there's a microphone. You gotta click on it with either the mouse or on the, the tablet, and it should unmute you. Um...
He also might be able to hold down the spacebar, and if you hold down the spacebar while you're talking, it's, it temporarily unmutes you as long as you're holding the spacebar down.
Oh, I didn't know that. That's, that's a good tip, Leah.
No spacebar. Not a muting room.
All right, well, we'll try to move forward. Peter, is there any way to unmute Skip from a remote location?
I'm sorry, I can't do that. I can only ask him to unmute, which you all have been doing.
All right, perfect. Okay, uh, so we'll go back to, to order, uh, real quick, and then we'll take another right amount of order. Um, actually, we don't, I don't think we need to. We have everything going pretty quick. So, um, we have next, uh, minutes, treasury warrant payroll. I'll entertain a motion to approve treasury warrant number ten and payroll.
Whitman makes a motion to approve treasury warrant number ten and payroll.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Skip, you are now unmuted, so please don't mute yourself again. We are right. All right. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion about, uh, treasury warrant number ten and payroll? Uh, hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Uh, Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Stillings?
Stillings, aye.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye, excluding any COA or election wages.
Good. Uh, Clark? Clark?
Clark, aye.
Okay, and Residi, aye. Motion carries, uh, unanimous.
We hear, but I can't see.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have a board, uh, approval of meeting minutes from November second and November twelfth. I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
Mitch, I have a question. I have some comments on the November second, um, I think it's the November second meeting, but I don't think we had a meeting on the twelfth. Wasn't, wasn't that supposed to be the, what, the special?
Yeah, that was supposed to be, that's what, yeah, that's exactly what it was, and we just didn't take it off.
That was supposed to be special. Yeah, sorry. Yep, that shouldn't be on there. So, uh, yeah, go ahead with your questions on the second.
Okay, so for the meeting minutes for the second, hold on, give me one sec. Sorry, um, for the marijuana RFI update, I was the one that had made the motion, I believe, for that, and Mitch seconded it. I think in the minutes it says that Lyndon made the motion and Mitch seconded. Um, for the stormwater IMA, I can't remember if I made the motion or if someone else made the motion. So, um, I think it says that I made the motion, but I honestly can't remember if I did that or not. And then, I would just like to see the little bit about the town center study portion reworded. Dave and I kind of did that presentation together. I didn't need, I didn't need Dave there to help me, which is the way the minutes read, that Dave was there to help Leah. And it was Dave and I both doing it. And so, um, yeah, I just kind of would like to see that a little bit reworded.
Okay, apologies, I didn't, um, didn't take a look at that, but I, yeah, that was my impression too, is that you were both there together, um, to present on it. So, I guess we can, um, if we can have, I guess somebody, uh, just go back and revisit. I don't recall who made the motions about the stormwater either, and just get that clarified. So, um, at this point, we could either, um, come back to these at the next meeting and approve them, or, uh, well, because we don't have secret recommended changes yet for the rewording of the, the presentation, maybe we should just put these off until the next meeting.
All right, would you like me to send recommended changes for the rewording of that section and send it to Samika and Ron and then?
Yep, and then Ron can disperse it to the rest of the group and then we can get it taken care of at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so, uh, next on the agenda is public comment. Um, do we have any members of the public that are here for public comment? If you are, I know that we're in a, back in the Zoom setting, so please, um, raise your hand, uh, if you're here for public comment and Peter Crane, um, can let you in. And I'll see any hands raised, um, so we'll move on from public comment. Next on the, uh, agenda, we have the town administrator update. Uh, Ron, we have a COVID-nineteen pandemic response, and I'm sure you have some other updates you want to give as well.
Yeah, let's, let's start with the COVID. I'm not going to give you the numbers tonight, but the cases are, uh, increasing dramatically, not just in Rutland, but all the towns around Massachusetts and specifically in the towns around us. So there's a lot of discussion about that today. I am going to be doing a training meeting of all-town employees, uh, tomorrow, and I know I invited, uh, the Board of Selectmen and other boards if they want to join the meeting. And it really is an update, uh, in terms of what's going on with the governor's new executive orders. So we're going to be talking about those things in it. Because there is a increasing of cases, I wanted to go through all the basics again with all the employees to make sure that they all understood the precautions we should take. I want to let the board know that today, um, they closed all-town buildings except for the town hall and the annex to the public. Uh, that's not a big impact, but, uh, stopped, there are a few little programs we had in terms of recreation at the senior center, uh, for the seniors. It's just, you know, on the recommendation of the health agent, it's just getting too dangerous now with the, the dramatic increase of cases. So there's only a few programs there. They're suspended temporarily until things calm down a bit. Um, the same is true for the senior volunteer program, the tax, the tax program, that's going to be stopped temporarily. I've instructed the library to stop letting people come into, uh, browse the library. They can still get the books at the curbside. We're taking all these precautions once again because of the nature of the, um, significant increase that we're seeing. We met today to talk a lot about the town meeting, the upcoming town committee. And I learned about the process you guys use in the, in the annual town meeting and how we could, um, do things to increase the safety of people. And we are looking at using the vote counters, uh, and the sound system to, um, provide the ability for someone, uh, if necessary, to sit in their car to be able to listen to the town meeting to actually vote. So we have that as sort of a backup plan. We're not expecting a lot of people at town meeting because the agenda is a very basic agenda. There doesn't seem to be any controversy on it. So we're not expecting a lot of people. But we do want to look at potential options for those people who might can be concerned about the safety of going inside the building. Your auditorium is large. We feel we can do more than six feet of distance for people, but, again, there may be some people that don't want to go into a building period. So, uh, my team is working on that, uh, right now to develop plans, uh, for a backup to, to do that if we have to. And I'm told it worked really well at the annual town meeting. So, uh, that is in process to make sure that's okay. So we met about that today. And the, um, school superintendent, uh, also called for a meeting about one-thirty. So I met with my team, myself, the, uh, health agent, the, uh, the police chief, the fire chief, our dispatch, uh, administrator, uh, the town clerk to talk about internal COVID issues. By one-thirty, we met with, uh, the school superintendent and, and people from all the towns that, uh, provide children to the school district. And there was a lot of discussion. As you know, the plan originally has been for them to open it next week or so, uh, to students. And I think there's a lot of concern because every town, uh, that was talking at this meeting, the numbers are going up dramatically. So I know they're meeting with their facilities team tonight to discuss it and a school committee to discuss it. Uh, but they wanted to get from us, and when I say us, I mean all the surrounding towns, what the status of the, um, virus was in our communities, how many cases, how many positive tests, what the issues are, so they could have that in the discussion that they're having. Clearly, I think undermined is to, to think about if they should just stay remotely or to actually start classes. Uh, no decision was made today, but, but they're looking to, to, um, do everything they can to protect, uh, their staff and the schools. One of the, of the schoolchildren, one of the major concerns is, you know, if, if somebody gets sick, it limits, they don't have a lot of substitute teachers. So it could be a real problem with staffing, uh, if, if the, the virus spreads out in any significant way. So again, I just want you to know that that's an important discussion. Uh, COVID is, is rising to the top of everybody's, uh, issues right now because of what's going on. My intention is to keep the town hall and the annex building open to the public, at least for now, and we'll kind of play that out as things develop. But I'd like to, to keep the buildings, at least those two main buildings, open as long as possible. Last week, you'll all recall, we had a problem with a water pipe breaking. Uh, there was a leak and the, uh, DPW went in and dug it out, found the leak. Uh, but it turned out that it was more than one leak. As they were fixing one leak, they found another leak and then they found a third leak. It turns out that that section of pipe is located near a swamp, and the water in a swamp, for some reason, has more acid in it and is eating up the pipe faster than what the life of the pipe would be in a normal situation. So today, the, the water is up and running for everybody. Uh, it's been a real challenge. DPW had to bring in a consultant, a contractor to come in and, and help fix the problem. But, uh, Joe, our DPW superintendent, has some real concerns about that pipe and, and problems that might occur with that pipe because, uh, he's not comfortable that it's going to hold up for a long period of time. So, it is something we're going to be talking about in the future. Hopefully, it, it lasts for a while. But it's, um, it's going to be something I think that's going to come back, the haunt us because of the nature of that pipe. So I kind of wanted to bring you guys aware of it. Things are going well. Uh, I've been working a lot with department heads and, uh, trying to organize things, and we're going to be talking about later on in the meeting about the recreation department. Um, and I'll fill you in more into that, but that's what I have for now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. If I could just, uh, mention, Ron, I did see an email, uh, go to all of your department heads about a, um, five-year capital plan. I know that was something that you had talked about, uh, in your interview process and something that a lot in the community, a lot of folks are very excited about the process of putting that together. So, um, excited to see movement on that as well. So, thank you. Um, all right, so...
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, just for clarification, with town hall and the annex being open, they're open for, people don't need to make appointments to come in. It's just people can still stop in as they've been accustomed to?
That's correct, Leah. I'm not making appointments, anything at this point. They were going to be fully open as we've been Monday through Thursdays, and it's my intention to keep it open. Friday's actually, my office is open because I just leave the door unlocked. But, oh yeah, we're staying up, we're doing normal operations for now. But I'm not going to lie to you that the, uh, because of the nature of what's going on, that, you know, I don't know how long that's going to last. Uh, if it gets to a point where I think it's too dangerous, we may have to close down again. But, you know, again, I'm a s- a strong believer that the town buildings, the key town building should be open as long as possible because we have an obligation to provide services to the people of town. So as long as I can do it and I do it safely, I'm going to do it now. I'll also say that we have taken a lot of precautions. There's plastic screens all over the place, there's virus, um, sanitizer all over the place. We're taking all the precautions recommended by the CDC. So I feel good about what we're doing, uh, and I will continue doing that. We, we have the maintenance people cleaning the building in the, in the morning, but I'm also going to have staff continuously clean their offices, their surrounding areas, because you know, people come in, you got to clean it all the time. So, uh, we'll do everything we can to make sure everybody's safe, but we're going to stay open as long as we can.
Thank you. And I have one other question. You probably can't answer this, and it might come up later on, not tonight, but with Joe. That section of pipe, um, the, off of Miles Road that had the burst and everything, that wasn't part of the section that was in the capital plan when we were looking at the borrowing and everything for the water sewer lines and everything, correct? That was...
Yeah, I was saying no, Laura, because, uh, Joe wasn't concerned about this pipe because it should have had a normal, longer life. So that wouldn't have been on an immediate capital plan. We've had a lot of discussion about it's going to have to be moved up on the capital plan or moved up as an emergency repair, uh, because it's literally like fifteen years earlier than what it should have been in terms of repair. And again, I'm not a scientist or an engineer, but it has something to do with the, uh, acid nature of the water in a swamp area. Uh, but Joe is, I mean, we actually talked about, and, uh, there may still be a discussion about, you know, we just put that, I think, fifty thousand dollars in, uh, in account for these kind of disasters. Well, this proves that we are right in putting that on the town meeting warrant. Maybe we should even increase that number from retained earnings to town meeting, but it's something we're still discussing. It's, it's just not over. It's going to be a major problem.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, uh, moving on, we already tackled both business from RDIC and thank them for coming in. Um, new business, we have a recreation state place, uh, discussion. Uh, Ron, you had requested this be on, so I'll, I'll give it forward to you.
So I've had a lot of discussions about this. The, and, and you guys have had a lot of discussions about this in the past with regard to the recreation department and, and the staffing we should have. And I brought in both Sarah and Katrina. Both of them are on this, um, Zoom meeting. And we're trying to figure out, you know, what work we could do. And, and I actually started working with the community center director or senior center director, I don't know how you want to find out. And we were going to create some new activities in the, uh, community center, uh, some recreation kind of exercise classes. And then as the COVID numbers increased, we had to cancel that because we just cannot have that building open, uh, given what's going on. So, you know, we talked, Karina and Sarah and I talked about what do we do with both of them? The, the, Sarah, you know, she can't do the before-after-school programs because the schools will no longer let her into the building to do those programs. So those programs are canceled. Both of them, their salaries are eating into each individual revolving fund. Um, and there's no income going into those funds to make up for their salary. So it's, it's a real problem. So we discussed a lot of things and I asked them to work together to develop a plan, uh, for activities. What could they do to, to provide some kind of quality services to the town, even though people can't meet and come together like they would do under the recreation or in the children's programs? Right now, and I'll let them get more into the detail of it, but there is a ski club that they've been working on in the past. And the question was, what happens if, and I talked about having, uh, Karina be laid off. What would happen to that program and how would that be run? We talked about creating more Christmas programs, more community events to try to give them things to do. Uh, and at the end of the day, I think we agreed upon the fact that there's probably enough work for one of them to do, but not both of them. Uh, so, you know, and, and I, I want to thank both of them because they gave a lot of thought to this. They worked together. But I think my recommendation is going to be that we're going to lay, uh, Karina back off and not take money out of her revolving fund. And we'll take revolving fund money from, uh, the, the, uh, state program and keep Sarah on. And she'll pick up some of the things, the few things that Sarah could have did, like the ski club, she'll pick it up. Now, the unemployment, the good thing about this, and I think I don't like any of this, but the good thing about this is that the unemployment benefits are paid from the CARES Act, so we'll get reimbursed from them. Um, so I'm going to ask, I guess I'm going to ask Sarah. She's on the line. I'd like Sarah to talk about the conversation between the three of us and the kinds of things that you would do. And this allows the revolving fund for the rec program to not be burned out with salary costs. And then my plan is as soon as the activities can get back in place, as soon as COVID comes on or calms down, we could start creating these programs, we'll bring Karina back for that whenever that appropriate time is. If it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, can I have Sarah talk a little bit?
Sure.
Um, after your meeting with Ron and Karina and I speaking, I think we both agree that somebody needs to stay in rec for both of us to be laid off and there kind of be no face of recreation just to communicate with parents and the schools and work on future programming. That would be a huge disadvantage to the department as a whole. Um, we did get, um, CARES funding for Civic Rec, which is a new online platform that we're hoping to start using when the world comes back and we can have programs running. But there is a lot of training and implementation that will be required, stuff that we could be doing now. So when programs can start to run, we can hit the ground running and not have to take time out. Um, this will also allow me to continue any trainings that are required through the Department of Ed for us to continue to keep our license for before and after-school programs. So again, when Dr. McColl... So again, when Dr. McColl says that those programs can start again, then open them up as soon as possible. I can certainly take over ski club, so that can continue for the families that are comfortable with the kids going to ski club. We have a ton already enrolled, so we would like to have that available to the kids who certainly don't have a lot out there right now. And then I would be more than happy to do some community events. We had the pumpkin patch at Halloween, which went over well, um but we've been looking at some other things that we could do around the holidays that will obviously involve social distancing, but stuff out there for the families in town.
How are we navigating even the outdoor events that limited to twenty-five people per the advisory from the governor? How are we navigating that with some of these outdoor events?
So going forward, I think any event that we did, like we had looked at doing a house decorating contest for Christmas, so that would just be, you know, similar to the one that one of the PTOs did for Halloween. Families can register through us, we'll do a map, and then families can drive through town, so. Nothing that involves people coming in contact with each other. We were gonna do um Santa letters where kids could drop off letters to Santa, and I have like an automatic thing that will generate a letter back to them. That's something that used to be done at the Festival of Trees. I don't know what's going on with that this year. And then we were looking at doing Adopt a Family, where I would reach out to the principals at all three schools to get some families that could use extra help at this time of year. And then open that up to the public to donate, whether it be food or money or gifts, to provide some stuff for families this Christmas.
Well, uh my question specifically was, we were talking about ski club, um pumpkin patch event. I mean, are you just gonna limit participation to under twenty-five kids, or what is the the plan for that?
So the pumpkin patch, that was, I think, prior to the new covid regs coming in. Um, as far as ski club is concerned, the mountain has all of their like covid protocols in place, and they're aware that ski clubs are happening and they're placed on certain nights and days. So that every ski club isn't there at the same time. Karina may be able to jump in on that a little bit more.
But and just so you know, Mr. Chairman, in the past, there used to be a busing and the kids would be bused to the mountain. In this case, parents are gonna have to bring their kids to the mountain. That's, so there won't be any busing activities where they would be together. So we will be wide open and meet the requirements uh for the mountain, and they'll deal with the kids in terms of the social distancing and stuff.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so I don't have any questions from the board? I think we had talked about, um, I know Leah, you had brought this up a couple of times, and and Ron, we had talked about this as well. Eventually, uh, you know, I know right now we have a two-hundred-and-five-thousand-dollar structural budget, that's it. But eventually, perhaps, looking at reforming recreation position into a more regular, non-revolving account funded position with the town um to prevent uh kind of the situation we're in right now, long term. I know these are extenuating circumstances. Covid is not something that anyone saw coming. So it's just something that I think, you know, the board would at least like to see, at least as a proposal. Now might not be the type, right time to do it, given our budget constraints and given what the likely impact financially of of this pandemic is gonna be on municipalities, but I certainly, you know, I can't speak for the whole board, but I think that that's something that that we're looking to figure out long term.
So, Mr. Chairman, I am gonna look at that for the end of the meeting and the budget process, and we'll see what we can put together. In terms of this, I don't know if you guys feel there's a vote is necessary or not. It'd be my intention to keep Sarah working. Again, I wanna thank both of these ladies for their cooperation. Neither one of them is excited to be laid off, but uh they saw the need, they understood there wasn't enough work for both of them, so compliments to them, but my plan is to keep Sarah on, lay off uh Karina for a short period of time until we have programs and things she can do to bring her back. Uh, if you wanna make a motion to support that, or if you think you guys are comfortable that I can do that under the powers of the town administrator, I'm good with either way.
I I have the personal opinion, or it's not specifically laid out, um, I think you informing us has met the requirement. But I'll leave it to the rest of the board if it's something that they would like to have a vote on. Jeff, I see your hand is up.
I do, thank you. I I wanted to speak towards the layoff, uh since we have Karina uh online here, I wanted to hear from her on if that's her will to uh be laid off, and if it's not, then maybe we can have a discussion on something else that she could do for the town in there. So I just wanted to uh ask if we could maybe hear from her if that's her will to accept a layoff. Otherwise, I'd like to talk about something else maybe that she could fill in.
Um, thank you. It it's, if there's another position where I can be helpful and continue working and not just com- continue to deplete the revolving fund, that would be fine. I would totally be open to any suggestions like that, um. But at at this point, I understand that it's just, it's more about the limited resources in the revolving fund and needing to be able to start back up again when things improve.
Jeff, you get to come to select my standings. Uh, Jeff, this was something that these two ladies actually worked out among themselves. You know, we talked about them and I said, well, 'cause I was looking at, does it make sense to to keep both of you, what could you do? And and they came to the conclusion that, and I said to them, I said, I don't want you just trying to figure out what to do yourselves all day long. You have to have something that has real value to the town. And they came up with this recommendation to me, so it wasn't, I didn't make the recommendation, it actually came from both of them after a lot of discussion between them about what they could do and what they couldn't do. Like I say, I was pretty impressed with the way they handled it.
I thank you guys, if I may, Mitch, if you don't mind.
Well, doesn't sound to me like that's
Go ahead, Jeff, sorry.
Sorry, I'm not, I'm not hearing the tone from Karina that this is something that she welcomes.
Jeff, this this is delving into an area that is inappropriate. Um, I mean, you're asking an employee, you know, about a sensitive situation. What is, I mean, what is you, are you recommending moving an employee into a different position? Is that, I I just don't understand what we're trying to accomplish through this process.
Well, it's my understanding that I just, I wanna, I wanted to hear that this is what she wanted to do. But if if she's, my understanding is they're both only part-time, correct? There may be, there may be, you know, you get the DPW, uh other type of things that they may be able to fill in in the meantime, instead of, you know, being technically unemployed, but but if that's what they've worked out and that's what they wanna do, then you know, far be it from from me to uh suggest otherwise. I wanna make sure that this is this is compatible for everybody involved.
Yeah, I think it, I think it makes the most sense because Sarah can easily take over my responsibilities for a period of time, whereas there's no way I can do Sarah's job. So I think it makes the most sense both from the standpoint of the status of both of our revolving funds, as well as just programmatically and being able to maintain continuity for residents and people generally start to look for um their summer camp options and stuff around the holidays, so if no one's in the department to answer those questions, that's difficult for people. Certainly, if there's another department who needs help and I can be transitioned into a role, I'm totally open to to that situation as well that, but I feel like that's, that decision would be, you know, lay elsewhere.
Yeah, um, so Ron, why don't you uh take the reins and just, you know, ask what you need from the board? I think, again, we're we're kinda delving a little bit off a little bit um in terms of what the process is and and everything.
So to be clear, just to be clear, that that I've already told Karina that is my plan that when we can bring her back and we actually have work for her to do, which I envision is sometime before the spring because she's gonna have all the summer programs. Hopefully, by then, the vaccination will be going on and we can have summer programs, so we'll bring her in time to get the planning done for the summer programs and stuff, spring and summer program, so. She's only gonna be laid off until we need her back. She's not going anywhere. She's uh staying as an employee, and if if, Jeff, if I came up with some other need, you know, some part-time person left and I need somebody, I'd be happy to bring her in on a temporary basis, but right now I don't have that need, but if if it does arise, I'd definitely consider that as well.
Okay, so do we have any questions, comments, before we move on?
Mitch, if I may, this is Leah.
Go ahead, Leah.
I just wanted to, first of all, thank everyone, Sarah and Karina for working this out, and Ron for really kinda helping guide everything and keeping an eye on things. Um, I think one thing, and this is a conversation and something maybe Ron to just keep in the back of your mind, I think as the town grows, having our recreation and safe place people under the the budget is beneficial. I would also argue that having a full-time rec per- position might be beneficial, or a more than fifty percent um position would be beneficial. And also, I feel like, as we've heard from Sarah, even her, the inability to get into the schools where she does a lot of her program for Safe Place is, again, just continuing to highlight the need for space for recreation activities, not only for kids, but also for adults. So this is, I think, a long-term plan and not something that is, I just think the pandemic is kind of highlighting highlighting this, that we don't have any place, that even if the numbers were saying that it was okay, but the school didn't want more people in, we wouldn't have somewhere to do that, so.
So I would say a couple of things to that. So first and foremost, I I agree with you. I'd love to get these positions in normal budget, so we're not dependent upon a revolving fund, so that goes for both of them. Sarah can correct me if I'm wrong, but my my thought process, or at least my understanding is that's a before-school and after-school program, which ties into what the schools are doing. So I'm not sure if that's a separate building issue, because I think the program is designed to fit into the school system. And how they deal with kids before and after school. Is that right, Sarah?
It is, but if we had another space, we could provide care over vacations or on snow days, days when we're not normally allowed in the school or have a space for Karina to utilize for summer fun, so it could definitely be utilized in many other ways.
I also know that in other towns, if there's daycares um in that it's pre-approved, kind of you sign up for your afternoon transportation to go to a certain location that's different from your home lo- location in a non-pandemic year, then that's totally doable, so it doesn't necessarily have to match where you're getting picked up in the morning or where you're getting dropped off. Um, so just, again, it's something to think about, and it's not only for Safe Place, um but it's, you know, highlight, in my mind, it highlights in on the need again.
Yeah, I I think, I mean, i- is it though that I know that we have an issue right now with the revolving fund where it goes to salary. And that's obviously something that we have to work out. Um, in some of the other communities I work, you have positions that are funded through the municipality, but they still have a revolving fund set up that is raised through activities. And that revolving fund can then be used to acquire space. Now, I know it's been difficult, particularly in this, not acquire as in purchase, but to to use space, it's been difficult in this climate because we have a community center, but also because that community center serves um our most at-risk population. And so the only thing going on right there now is wheels on wheels. It's just, again, something I think that is part of, if we look at moving these positions under the budget, or a position under the budget, we're gonna have to come up with a long-term space, long-term plan. I think that is also um one of the good things that Ron has implemented, that that capital plan, that long-term plan, um to bring that to fruition. Because we really just, as a town, need to take a better look at our buildings and how we're using the space. There's a lot of capital needs in all of our spaces, um and it's just something we need to work out and be better at.
Thank you.
Alright, does anyone have any uh, anything else? Ron, did you need us to to act on? I mean, it's really up to the board, whatever we want.
Oh, that's fine. Again, I just wanna thank Sarah and Katrina for coming on. Appreciate their input to help us in this end, and uh thank you guys for really being a class act as it came to this issue.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Okay. So Ron, did you want a motion or a vote, or are you all set?
No, I don't, as long as you guys are comfortable with me doing it, I'm fine with it. There's no requirement of a vote. Uh, I just, like, I know there was some issue about this last time, but but I I think it falls right under the duties of the town administrator, so I'm okay with just acting, as long as there's no disagreement with the board.
Okay. I think the only, the only issue is when these decisions come up, to obviously bring them before the board, and I think that that was handled appropriately, so I appreciate that. Okay, so moving on, uh next item on our new business, our liquor licenses. Uh, Jeff, uh this is an item you had requested. I know you requested waiving some fees. You had mentioned a particular sportsman's club um for the pouring fee. I know that we looked at some of that too, uh so if you could just go ahead and explain what it is you're trying to do.
I appreciate that. I appreciate you putting it on the agenda. It's not my own i- idea. I'm stealing this from the City of Gardeners. And what what they have, are doing for in-person consumption liquor licenses with someone, go ahead. Nope. Uh, in-person consumption liquor licenses, which my understanding is up for renewal next month. Those those are the venues that were hit the hardest in our town because they don't have, they weren't able to be open, especially this summer, for a lot of the the events that they rely on for, you know, their local, for their own economy in there. So I I think it would be tough for us as a town for a uh places like the Center Tree, the Milk Room, and the Sportsman's Club for sure. Bedrock. For them to to struggle through this covid season and then to get a a whopper of a a renewal fee bill from the town, so what I think would be reasonable for us when we're going to renew uh these licenses, again, for in-person consumption uh establishments in there, to waive the fee this time around uh for them in uh to try to support in a little way, littlest way that we can during uh this this pandemic, and I, it could just be a handful. That we're talking about Lads would be in there, uh Bedrock, Club, Center Tree, Milk Room. I count five, correct me if I'm wrong. But that's what I'd like to see, if the board could support that, this this go-around, this time around. That's all I have. Thank you, Jim.
Alright, um, do we have, Ron? What is the total we're, obviously, I'm I'm concerned um because we do have a two-hundred-thousand-dollar-plus structural hole that we have to fix um over the next couple of years. And we do have a lot of other businesses that also require operating fees in town that we're not waiving. And I think that would be my only concern. Ron, do we have a number that we rolled up, or was collected?
So I provided you in your package, uh two thousand twenty-one license renewal revenue. Uh, go back, it was just there. Go go back to the sheet, yeah, for a minute, I'll get into the other sheet, but. So right now, if you look under liquor, you'll see restaurant on-premise, which is part of what Jeff was talking about. If you serve all alcohol, the fee to a restaurant is a thousand-dollar renewal fee. So there's three restaurants currently that are, you know, full-scale, full alcohol. So that'd be a total of three thousand dollars a year that the town gets from that revenue. There's an additional, right underneath, there's an additional three restaurants or serving places that serve wine and malt. That's a five-hundred-dollar-a-year annual license fee. So that'd be another fifteen hundred dollars, so you'd have that. And then I think the third one, I think Jeff is talking about too, is underneath the dollars, Club, All Alcohol. That's the Sportsman Club, that's three hundred dollars. So if you were to waive just the fees for those, you'd be looking at forty-eight hundred dollars in fees uh that you would waive. Now, what I'll point out, and I think it's, obviously, in my letter, I talk about the fact that the owners, and and I think Jeff's right on the money, restaurant owners are facing difficult times as a result of covid nineteen, and the numerous restrictions have been placed on them during these difficult times, so. Now, like, they gotta open later and close earlier and uh limit customers and everything, so it's it's having a big impact on those type of businesses, and they're obviously important to the town. The only thing I I wanna point out, though, when you waive a fee of anybody, somebody's paying that cost because their expense side of the budget doesn't go down. You know, the the concept with fees is that the fee is supposed to pay for things like inspections, uh and for, you know, them to come in and do the licensing and public health inspections go out there. The fee is designed to kinda pick up the cost of the town now. If they don't pay the cost as part of the fee, that cost gets shifted to general taxpayer, so. Yeah, those businesses would reduce by forty-eight hundred bucks. Taxpayers across the board would end up paying that increase because it's still, expenses are in our budget, right? The the other question I wanna point out, and again, this is all up to you guys, is when you start saying that some people are not gonna have to pay fees, other licensees are gonna say, well, what about us? We're suffering because of this too. Package stores are suffering, uh, you know, common Vic people could argue. And I just put the chart in there to show you what the total amount of money is. The total amount for the town on an annual basis of anticipated revenue, you look at the very bottom, it's nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, so. If you were to waive all of the fees, it's not huge money, but it shifts it to general taxpayer, so. I understand completely his viewpoint and the concerns that he's having. But I think you might have other But I think you might have other license holders go, hey, you know what? You gave it to restaurants, give it to us too.
Well, correction, if you, if you don't mind through the chair, it's not so much restaurants that we give it to. It's, it's in-person consumption liquor establishments that rely on that portion of their business to, uh, to make ends meet. I just, uh, keep referencing the Sportsman's Club. The Sportsman's Club hasn't had a meeting, you know, since this broke, broke out and, uh, you know, they're, they're a not-for-profit and they have no income coming in, no income. And it's just depleting, uh, you know, the budget, the savings, the little savings, uh, that they might have in that area, whereas the bar was supplementing, uh, to keep the lights on and things like that, even though they only be open like four hours a day. So it's places like that that, that actually kind of feel it in, in like, you know, hearing from the, you, the officers there is like, you know, it depends on how long this, uh, this COVID goes on, uh, we may have to sit down and start getting creative on how we're gonna be able to keep paying the simple bills like that. So I can only imagine the, uh, the pain to like the Center Tree, who just opened up, and they, they seem to be, you know, taking off a little bit as a, you know, a decent establishment and, you know, and this, and I think it's the message that the town to send these guys a, a bill for the renewal of a license that they really hadn't been able to use, uh, this year. I, I just, uh, it's a gesture of goodwill. We say we're supportive of, of these small businesses. Uh, it's just an opportunity. I think, you know, the forty-eight hundred that you mentioned, I think it's, they say de minimis. I think we, I think we can work it out, uh, through that, but the, uh, the logistics and the message of sending, it's kind of like the zing we all get with the sewer bill this year, you know? Uh, it, it just, oh, boy, it was a, uh, you know, it was, it was right in the gut to, uh, to get these, you know, three, four, seven-hundred-dollar bills out of the blue. I think to be able to send, uh, you know, these establishments, you know, the Sportsman's Club, three hundred dollars and where they have no income coming in, uh, I think it would be a nice gesture uh, of the town to recognize in-person consumption establishments, uh, of liquor as opposed to the liquor license. The, uh, the common eviction licenses that come up, you know, we can take those on a, on a case-by-case, but I, I would submit that a lot of those common vics, the Dunkin' Donuts and things like that, they were able to stay active, even, you know, if you will, the, uh, liquor store and things like that, the honey farms, tho- those were able to at least stay open and active, but not so much the, uh, the handful, the small handful of, uh, in-person consumption places. So, uh, appreciate your point of view. I would be leaning towards some sort of a motion to waive the fee for the in-person consumption renewal of the liquor licenses, sure.
So just to be clear, because I don't want to stray here, th- in my opinion, this is completely a policy member. I wanted to give you the information, the basic information about the cost of various options, but this is clearly a, a decision of the Board of Selectment, but I wanted you to see the whole package of what fees are and what you would be talking about. How you guys decide if you want to do it all or none, it's, that's totally up to you.
We, we really, I mean, we just had to see that because of the way that our funding is structured, because of the way things are, we had to lay somebody off. Um, because we don't have any money in that account. We're in a huge structural hole, um, in all of these inspections that are associated with this stuff. I mean, we're just gonna be asking our residents to pick up the tab, no pun intended, for these licenses. I understand conceptually wanting to support these businesses, but I, I just can't agree with pushing off more burden onto our residents, um, you know, it, it's a tough spot, we're in one of the worst economic climates of all time. But, uh, Lyndon, you have your hand up. You're on mute.
Yeah, I had to find my mute button. Um, just, just in line with this, Ron, do you have any idea what the impact on the, um, meals tax has been on revenues, um, due to the pandemic? Is that substantially down?
Yeah, to be honest, I haven't even looked at that number, so I couldn't give you an honest answer. That wasn't something on the agenda that I thought of. I, I can't imagine it's been a huge impact, but everything is, has an impact, you know what I mean? But, but I don't think it's been huge, but yes, it had to have some kind of impact.
Well, I guess I, that's kind of a little bit of my concern, is there's a lot of little areas that we haven't looked at that's gonna be a, a decrease in revenues. And as Mitch was mentioning, we do have a substantial negative balance that we're, we're dealing with currently. So I'm a little concerned if we don't look at all aspects of the revenues. And I also would somewhat want to consult with the, um, Finance Committee to see what kind of, um, you know, what their opinion is on some of these type of.
We can, we can either choose to, um, I don't know if Jeff, he said he was looking for a motion, but I'm not, I mean, he's more than willing to make one. I'm not sure if he was making a motion. Um, we could either push this off, um, and ask, you know, FinCom, or we could take a vote on it tonight. I know Karen is, is in the meeting, um, but I'm not sure if it's something that she, you know, not knowing the issue before, and wants to speak on, um, in her role. I mean, she certainly doesn't have to do that. But Karen, if you do, raise your hand, and we'll let you in. But I'll, I'll leave it up to the board.
With due respect, uh, Mr. Chair, I would, I would make that motion. Let's put it to a vote. Just a motion to waive the in-person consumption renewal of, of alcohol licenses this year.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? There's no second, the motion fails. Again, uh, this is something I think we're gonna continue to look at. Uh, Leah, did you?
I just wanted to ask if we could have, um, if we had a little bit more information from, uh, FinCom or from Dan about kind of the projections of the estimated, uh, revenues for meals tax and even excise tax and everything. Um, my concern is that we are already taxing our town, our, we're already taxed at our levy capacity, so this isn't even money that's going to get pushed to the townspeople. It's going to be a cut in services of some dollar amount. And it's, and it's not a significant amount in the scheme of our town, but, um, it, you know, I, we, like, pointed out, we just had to lay off furlough our rec director, so, um, which isn't under our budget, but it's still, these are the types of things that we're looking at as a town. And so, um, so, yeah, I, it's, I feel like it's between a rock and a hard place. I would love to give something to our businesses, but I feel like it's not fair to the town without a little bit more information to look at holistically what that, that could do to us.
Yeah, and that's a great point, Leah. I, I think, um, you know, to that point, to build off of it, I mean, we just saw a pipe main break on Main Street. And, you know, we're, we just went through the budget process with FinCom, um, and what we're gonna spend free cash on. And we are, we're tight, um, right now with, with everything. And I know that this pandemic is just gonna continue to create issues, but, um, losing that ten thousand dollars in, you know, services, um, or, you know, burdening, um, the taxpayers in the other way, uh, it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be tough. So I, I think, Ron, um, if we could maybe take a look at the meal tax, uh, for, uh, Mr. Nichols' request, um, just so we have a better idea as to what's projected, maybe coming up and, and how things are gonna look. And, you know, Jeff, I certainly respect, you know, really understand what you're trying to do, and it's something that we can revisit if we have a clearer picture as to, uh, as to what this is gonna look like in townwide forward. All right, so moving on in the agenda, uh, we have employee recognition for COVID efforts. Um, I know, Jeff, this is something you want to put on, uh, on the agenda. I think the, the general intent was to, I know that we've, we've talked about our first responders, our police and fire. Um, we've congratulated our council on aging folks that work with the Wheels on Wheels programs. I still think, um, there's, you know, a lot of staff that have gone above and beyond during the pandemic. And maybe, um, you know, tasking Ron to, to write a thank you, uh, on behalf of us to go to that staff. Is that kind of what you were looking to do?
Yes, they, you hit it right in the head, Mitch. Thank you. Uh, just, you know, on the heels of the Meals on Wheel, uh, recognition that we did for the essential staff workers there, which, which I thought was very, very nice. Yeah, as we are at the end of the season, I think it's time for us to make sure that we didn't leave anyone out. We did, we did recognize the, uh, the first responders. You know, the Meals on Wheels, the, the Council on Aging. Uh, I think, I think we should round up, uh, any other essential workers, uh, who persevered during this COVID, and that's to make sure that they're not left out, even if it's just a letter from the Town Administrator, uh, addressed to them personally, uh, and thanking them. You know, we're talking about the DBW, your, uh, your recreation workers, the, uh, the, the guys and gals who worked the pool this, this summer in there, the Cable Committee, uh, Peter Crain and his staff who, who came in and, and run these, these, uh, meetings for us. Uh, you know, the people who had set up, you know, for our annual town meeting in there with the, uh, the remote devices and things like that. Let's not, uh, miss out on anybody, even if it's just a letter. Thank yous are free. Yeah, but it comes, uh, uh, it goes a long way when it comes from the board members or the, the TA in there. So, uh, and I would leave it to, uh, the Town Administrator to identify those who haven't yet been recognized. But all of our essential workers in Rutland, uh, who persevered through this, I think we need to at least send them a, a, a thank you letter from the board, just like we did with the Meals on Wheels and our first responders in there. It's time, it's time to, to, uh, make sure that nobody is left out. That's all I asked. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Uh, I don't think we need a, a motion for that, Ron. Um, if we can put something together and then maybe at the next board meeting can present it, we can sign it, and you could send it to your staff to let them know that we value kind of what they've been doing during this, this whole ordeal.
Truthfully, I think it, it's almost everybody in some respects. I mean, tax people, everyone who's working right now, there's a, there's a lot of people working remotely and not at their offices and and anyone who's working right now, so it, it's pretty much everybody. I'll, I'll come up with something and I'll, I'll run it by the board.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
And last on the agenda, uh, is the appointment of a building commissioner. I know, Ron, um, you and Harold, the, the state fill-in. You posted the position. I know you conducted some interviews. Uh, you had indicated that process went well. Um, so I think you, tonight, you had a recommendation, is that?
That, that is true. So me and Harold, uh, went through all the different people who applied. There were three that we liked. As it turned out, one, the more we looked into, the more we decided it was not a good fit. Uh, we came down to a final two, which me and him interviewed together. And frankly, both of them were impressive, and both of them, uh, could have done this job. So we were happy that we got qualified people who applied for the position. Uh, we ended up choosing David McKay, who's, who's the person that I'm recommending for moving forward with the appointment with your coronation tonight. The, the other gentleman just lived an hour and fifteen minutes away from town, and we felt that for a part-time position, we were afraid that he wouldn't stay long based upon that kind of a commute every day. Uh, but they were both pretty equally qualified. Both were impressive. Uh, David has a lot of construction experience. He's been in the business for over thirty years. We felt that he had all the knowledge. And I asked him more of the general kind of questions. Harold asked him the real technical building inspection questions, and he, he pretty much handled it all pretty easily. Uh, so I'm looking forward to bringing him on board. He, uh, can start right away, so there's no big wait for him. And I gotta tell you that I appreciated Harold. Harold is the, is a state building inspector, and he knows a lot of these guys, and he knew this guy coming in, and he had good things to say, but it was, you know, having him on, on board to help us go through this process was tremendously beneficial. But I think this guy will do a great job for the town. And, uh, you know, this is why I'm recommending the appointment. I guess I'm, I was a little unclear as to the process, and I'm, it's my intention to bring all the department heads before this board for ratification. So I, I, I guess it, I'm moving forward with the appointment of, uh, David McKay for building inspector, and we'll be looking for the Board of Selectmen to have a motion to ratify that decision. And you guys should all have a copy of his resume in your packets.
Okay. Well, first, before we take the motion, I think should mention that he's got big shoes to fill. Um, Willie was obviously a staple in this town and great to work with for a long time. Um, so he's, he's got his work cut out for him, for sure. So at that, you know, I'll entertain a motion to, to ratify, uh, our Town Administrator's decision to hire his recommendation for his department head.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion with the board?
Aye.
Um, very none, uh, we'll have a roll call vote. Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Stillings?
Stillings, aye.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Clark?
Clark, aye.
And Recity, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Uh, thank you, Ron, and, and thank Harold for, for his hard work on helping to, to move us along. There's a lot of work to do in town. There's a lot of building, construction, um, and it's, it's good to have somebody finally with, with more hours back in that seat. Do we have an anticipated start date, Ron, before we adjourn?
He said he would start pretty much right away, so I want to meet with him, but I would expect him within a week or so to be in the office. Harold is gonna kind of help him, and he'd be in the process and help him, you know, uh, learn some of the Rutland things that are going on and bring him up to speed, but I would say within the next week, he should be on hand.
Okay, great. Um, anything else from the board before we, uh, adjourn? If not, uh.
I just have one, one reminder that the Town Center survey, uh, email blast just went out again. So, um, if folks that are watching, listening, haven't done that yet, it's on, it should be on the front of the, uh, town homepage. Um, so we can do that at all. We had a really good site visit, so, um, would appreciate feedback for sure.
Do we have, Leah, at that point, um, do we have, I guess, we have a lot of community groups that are active in town. I know the last time that we had met and you had given the update to the board, we had talked about the Rutland Business Association maybe sending out an email blast to their email chain. We have other groups in town that also have those large email lists. Have we been in contact with some of those groups that we can maybe use to get more responses in?
Um, I know Nancy's been reaching out with this, uh, through the Council on Aging, um, in the newsletter, and she has paper copies, because that's some of the concern, is not everyone has access to online. A number of the businesses that I spoke with personally haven't, weren't aware that the Rutland Business Association was picking back up again. So, um, I am trying to collect those individual uh, contacts to then probably pass on to Ron, Dave and Ron, um, and get that going. Um, so it's, I, Dave had reached out originally to the churches and the schools. So again, I had reached out to the, um, PTOs, but it was kind of before things had really started, and I had reached out to the Fourth of July Community, uh, Committee to see if they had, um, were planning any mailings or anything that could kind of, we could piggyback on. So.
We can, um, yeah, I know that, uh, we can reengage. I know that the last meeting you had mentioned, you know, those responses maybe weren't where we wanted them to be. Um, I know Bonnie and, uh, Bonnie Best and me and Fran would probably have the email list for the RBA or i- in one place. I think the other place too, and, um, if Sarah uh, has an email list and maybe some of the parents that use the recreation program for the students, for their kids, um, that might be, uh, another list that, that we have floating around where it's just, it's easy because we can just put out a blast that way. But I know that you've been working on that too. So just, I guess, let us know if we need to advertise it or market it anymore to get those responses up.
Yeah, definitely. We were kind of trying to get, get through, uh, the election and then thinking that we were gonna have a special town meeting, so that was kind of the, the big push to give, um, the town staff time to prepare, you know, finish election stuff and which I also wanted to comment on, it's awesome. It looks like Rutland had almost ninety percent of active voters, uh, participate in this past election. So I think it was eight, eighty-six percent, eighty-seven percent. So that's a huge turnout. So, good job, Ron.
Oh, that's great. Even, even some of the deaf people voted. It's awesome. Uh, but no, it, it.
It was active voters, active voters.
All right, okay, active voters. Uh, that's fine. Um, no, that's, that's great for the community. I, I did notice a, a lot of folks, um, you know, were very engaged to go to the polls, so.
And I think it's huge work for Anita and, uh, Damian and the town stat, the election workers and everything, to get through all of that. So, big props to all of them too.
Absolutely. All right, so, um, if there's nothing else for the board, um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have a very enthusiastic motion to adjourn, and people are enthusiastic, second, several people. So, um, any comments? Very none, we'll have a roll call vote. Stillings?
Stillings, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Clark?
Clark, aye.
And Recity, aye. Uh, we are adjourned. Thank you, Jeff, for joining us from afar, and, uh, again, thank you, Peter and Tamika.